Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for May 13th. Clerk Swob, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
President.
Councilmember Spadfor.
President.
There are eight members present at the forum. No members are absent. And we are to the meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, thank you. Is anybody from council that would like someone to be remembered at this time? All right, seeing none. Okay. Mayor Shore? Okay. At this time, let's rise for a moment of meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute and recognition of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Is anybody here from the Mental Health Awareness Month that would like to be recognized? Please come on down to the well.
What a pleasure. I did not know Ms. Lurie would be here. In any event, what I'm going to do is read from the resolution very quickly, right? We'll have some introductions after, of course, we accept the resolution. And then if you have anything to say, feel free. Says, whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month, recognized nationally, mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, shaping our thoughts, feelings, and behaviors, and impacting individuals, families, and communities. And whereas one in five people in our communities will experience challenges in their lifetime that can also impact their mental health. And whereas mental health does not discriminate and can affect people of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life, and addressing mental health needs is essential to end the stigma associated with depression, anxiety, and eating disorders, PTSD, and developmental disorders, just to name a few. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month highlights the importance of access to mental health care and support services, advocating for equitable access to treatment, resources, and interventions that address the diverse needs of individuals experiencing mental health challenges. And whereas Mayor Shore's Mental Health Task Force strives to enhance and promote awareness, analyze service needs and gaps, and improve access to mental health and behavioral services and resources. And whereas it is important to learn, act, and advocate, learn how life affects your mental health, and how to navigate a changing world, act by building a coping toolbox to manage stress, emotions, and challenging situations, and advocate to improve mental health for yourself, friends, family, and community. So now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council supports the continued work to promote higher awareness for Mental Health Awareness Month and mental health issues. And with that, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. We have a proper motion in place. Any comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. We do have Ms. Toni Young.
Hi, everyone. I would just like to introduce a couple of members of the mayor's Mental Health Task Force who are here with us today. Dr. Abbasi, who is the Assistant Professor at MSU in the Department of Psychiatry. She's the Chair of our Mental Health Task Force, and she will like to say a few words. But before that, perhaps the mayor has a recognition he'd like to make. We also have Sarah Lurie here with us. She's the CEO of the Community Mental Health Authority of Clinton, Eaton, and Ingham Counties.
We also, I also have a resolution, and I'm not going to read it because I think everything the Councilman Hussein said is very similar. We want to express the same sentiments. We are declaring that it is Mental Health Awareness Day in Lansing. I just want to thank not only the two women standing here, Sarah Lurie and Dr. Abbasi have done so much hard work, but they just had a recent retreat where we had Judge McCannon, we had folks from a variety of different agencies, and they are really working hard on the mental health crisis that we're seeing when we see people with those challenges. So, thank you both. Thank everybody on the task force who I know is watching. I give you one of these as well. You're just collecting, collecting frames, put them wherever you want. But thank you so much for your hard work. It has meant so much.
Thank you. I will say just one thing, that mental health care works. And as they say, it takes a city to raise a kid. I feel it takes a city to sustain a mission, and it's great to have a mayor with that vision and who understands that there is no health without mental health. At the task force, we are committed to breaking these silos, coming together to access needs, improve our health care, mental health care, and advocate and fight the stigma. So, thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Is there any councilmembers that have any comments at this time? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge the neighborhood on the west side, the west side neighborhood, and all of the issues they're dealing with, whether it's Martin Luther King detours and proposed reconfiguration, and all the traffic that is going through the west side, mostly of Genesee, I would assume, and I've heard to, instead of trying to find through downtown detour, because Martin Luther King is closed from Lenawey to Chiwasi. So, with that, I've been informed that there's a neighborhood meeting, crime and safety meeting, that's going to be scheduled for, that is scheduled for this Wednesday, the 15th, 6:00 PM at Letts Community Center. They're going to be talking about all those things, and I guess I also want to just reassure the westsiders that all of the appropriate authorities, from the police chief, all the way to the public service director, to the mayor, to most all of council here, we're aware of these issues. And I guess, if anything, I would say, just keep trying to be patient. I know it's hard this summer, as you talk about the traffic zooming down and up and through the neighborhoods, just when the weather breaks and everybody wants to be outside, I know. But it's being worked on. There's been some mitigation efforts, but again, this is just kind of a byproduct of having a CSO project and having these proposals in the city. So, we hear you, and anybody that can make that meeting, it's the west side neighborhood organization's meeting, it's at 6 o'clock at Letts on this Wednesday. Unfortunately, I'll be coaching my son's last soccer game on that time and day, but that meeting is going on, and I also just want to acknowledge everybody's struggles and concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I just wanted to quickly touch on the construction note. As everyone is well aware, Michigan Avenue is currently under construction, along with 127 and Saginaw, and just about all of the east side. But I wanted to remind folks, the businesses on Michigan Avenue are still open, and they can use all of our help. So if you're looking for some really good Mexican food, Aloasis is on Michigan Avenue, People's Kitchen. Looking for a tattoo, there's Tattoo Shop. You can get some of that QD Chip Dip right across the street once you're done with your tattoo. But yeah, please come visit our businesses. We've got some great businesses, and the construction is definitely hampering their sales right now. I also wanted to give a quick PSA. In the east side neighborhoods where I live, we have a terrible problem right now with speeding. So I would remind folks that we have a lot of families, kids, pets. The speed limit is 25, not 50. We also have cars parked on the side that have been damaged. So if we could have folks slow down, I appreciate the administration getting out there with signage every time I've asked for it. You know, we're doing everything we can to slow down traffic. And then, one last thing, we will have Friends of Bancroft Park. And if you're not familiar with Friends of Bancroft Park, we are the group that does a lot of the fundraising for the park. And if you haven't been to the park, it's on the north end. It's beautiful natural park, 43 acres. I definitely will go out there, there's trails. We will be having a fundraiser at Stobers on Michigan Avenue Friday from 4:00 to 7:00. So if you're looking for a drink and, coincidentally, in a construction area, Stobers will be open, and we'd love to have you there and, you know, meet the rest of the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson.
Sorry, I misspoke. Martin Luther King has closed Chiwasi to Saginaw, and I said something else, Chiwasi to Saginaw. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, let me, let me first reinforce what I, Councilman Cost already said about small businesses being impacted by construction. We had similar issues over the past few years in southwest Lansing, and we were in danger of losing a few, and we did lose a few small businesses. And one of the things, when I got out and talked to business owners, I guess I was not aware, some of these small businesses, just how razor-thin their profit margins are. And so sometimes they really are two to three, you know, months in terms of dip sales away from going under. And so it's critical if you want those folks to still be up and running and part of our corridors and our commercial districts after the construction, you have to support them through the construction, so I appreciate that. With that, also, I wanted to thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. Very well attended. Specifically, I wanted to thank Andrew Kilpatrick, who is the Director of Public Services. He was there and spent, I think, far more time than I actually had asked him to spend there. He talked a little bit about the potential for some road reconfiguration on South Waverly, really to kind of calm traffic and to create, I think, marketability along that corridor for commercial investment, things of that nature. But in any event, he fielded just a number of questions, did a fantastic job. And, you know, if there was something he couldn't answer, he took notes, and I've already heard that he's gotten back with people. So, Andrew, if you're watching, we appreciate you. I got a message today that, I think the words were Andrew Kilpatrick is the keeper, somebody that was actually at the meeting, and I agree. Also, there will, there will not be a constituent contact meeting in June. We actually have an issue with location over the summer. The community center that we use, or I should say, the specific room within the community center that we use is not available over the summer. The group is a little bit too big at this point to use the community rooms and the fire stations. So we typically recess over the summer, but what we are looking at doing is potentially kind of marrying our contact meeting to maybe a second work contact meeting, middle of maybe July. So we will make sure that we kind of nail down a date, time certain, and we'll get that information out, Councilman Garza and myself. We also have the SWAG Southwest Action Group meeting tomorrow. Typically, it's the first Tuesday, but because of the election commission, or the commission election, sorry, last Tuesday, we actually moved it, we moved it a week out. And so it's actually May 14th, tomorrow, 6:00 PM at 2101 West Holmes. The Luton Rich Neighbors Association, they also recessed over the summer, but they do have one additional meeting, and it is this Thursday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM at Mayflower Congregational Church at 2901 West Mount Hope. There have been a lot of questions in that area about school construction. We know that the Lansing School District are looking at, you know, first constructing Mount Hope, they also have to get Willow online, but then the, the next school, kind of the pipeline, is Luton. So there have been a lot of questions about what that construction is going to look like, how that will impact the city park that's adjacent to that. So I did reach out to the superintendent, Mr. Sheldonner. He is going to do everything he can to get over to that Neighbored Associations meeting after his own school board meeting. And so he will be in contact with me throughout the night, and he will let me know if he can make it. If he can't make it, there are a number of questions that will get over to him, and he'll get us responses in writing. Also, real quick, Churchill Downs, again, the neighborhood yard sale, garage sale is coming up, May 18th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Unique this year is they are actually, and one of the things we've really tried to do in southwest Lansing is create some interconnectedness between neighborhoods. And so, you know, folks coming out to the Southwest Action Group meeting, or the Juvenile South Lansing meeting, or constituent contact meeting, but really, again, creating the interconnectedness, and then kind of working with each other along commercial corridors and neighborhood boundaries and things like that. So the Lansing Eaton Neighbored Organization, which is actually west of Waverly, all the way up to the river, they are going to partner with Churchill, and so that neighborhood will also be having their yard sale this Saturday, 8:00, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then lastly, the Churchill Downs Community Association Annual Picnic will be Wednesday, June 18th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Wainwright Park. Think of neighbors, fun, food, inflatables, public safety, and the like. So we hope you come out on June 18th from 6:30 to 8:00. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you. Vice President Hussein. Any additional comments from council? All right, I just have one. I know people may have heard me talk about this in the past, about North Cemetery Archway. It's finally coming to fruition. The Plumbers and Pipefitters Union, big shout-out to them for taking this on. There was a concern from one of the neighbors in that area of the North Cemetery Archway back in 2018, that they didn't know where it was at, they wanted to see it back up. Over 100 veterans buried in that cemetery, and so the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union took it upon themselves to order new steel. And one of the conditions under the Parks and Recs Department was that they make it two feet taller, because the equipment's larger now, the trucks are bigger. So ordered all the new steel, had it powder coated, just got the permits approved, and the letters are getting put on as we speak. So that should be getting resurrected up very soon, and I will keep you in contact with that. So, thank you, Plumbers and Pipefitters. Mayor Shore, do you have anything?
I'll just go after that.
Oh, I apologize. I thought it was council and mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, clerk. Jeez. All right, city clerk.
Don't forget about me. All right. I just want to take a moment and thank everyone who participated in the election last week. We got all the votes counted and submitted. I expect that the county, the Board of County, I'm sorry, the County Board of Canvassers, thank you, will certify the election tomorrow. There will be four additional votes. Just to note for folks, if you have, under new Michigan law, if you failed to sign your envelope, you now have a cure period through the Friday after the election. So we have a couple of people who did a cure after the election, and their votes will be added. Also, under new laws, voters living overseas or on active military duty have until the sixth day after the election, which is today, to get their ballots in, as long as it's postmarked by Election Day, and we have two of those. So the canvassers will have to add those to the vote total. I don't think anything was within four votes, so I don't think it will change the results. But I wanted to mention that because it highlights for folks the different rights that we now have as part of the Michigan Constitution and Michigan election law. And then the Charter Commission will meet here in these chambers a week from tomorrow, May 21st, 4:30 is the time that worked out for all of the members. It will start off with a training from Michigan Municipal League, and the public comment will be after that. So I know that will make it possible for members of the public to get here and still be able to make public comment if they, if they wish, before the commission takes any of their actions on that night. We'll have the agenda posted before the meeting, and we'll have it on the city website as we do with all other city boards and commissions. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event.
For the 17th year, on Saturday, between 10:00 and 2:00, in front of the Mount Hope Cemetery's Cemetery Courtesy Office, the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries will be giving away up to four geraniums per person. We have 100 geraniums to give out, and they're to be used to plant on graves in the three city-owned cemeteries for your families. So if you'd like to get up to four geraniums, 1709 East Mount Hope, the Cemetery Courtesy Office, directly opposite of Mount Hope Cemetery, between 10:00 and 2:00 this Saturday. Thank you.
Any other community events?
So, may as well say it. The Old Ever Neighborhood Association is finally making a comeback after five years, because of me, of course. And we'll probably be meeting on the second Wednesday of each month, so that will probably start in about June. And we're considering two possible locations. Those are the South Lansing Library and/or the South Naz Church. And we've got several positions that are up and will be voted on on our first meeting. They are president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, communications, and regular board members for each precinct, 212, 213, and 215. And 215 doesn't have, currently have candidates yet, and I hope that people sign up for that.
Thank you. Other community events? All right, then, now is the deadline to register for public comment on legislative matters and/or show cause hearings. So we do have one show cause hearing for 1115 Regent Street, and then in terms of legislative matters, we have items three through five on the agenda. We'll give you about another minute to jump up and sign in with Tyrone if you haven't done so already. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. I want to congratulate a few folks. The Against All Odds Foundation had a wonderful dinner. Thank you for raising money to them for, for cancer survivors. There were many survivors there. It was, it was a nice night. Thank you to the Board of Water and Light and the hundreds of volunteers that came and cleaned up our river, which is in decent shape, so that's good to know, but they, they did a great job cleaning up, so thank you to them. I want to congratulate the Capital Area Housing Project. This morning, we had a groundbreaking in Lansing Eaton neighborhood for a new house that's going to be built next to a few other cap houses, and that's the first of four that they're going to be putting up this year throughout the city, three new build and one rehab. So that's great. Certainly, single-family housing is a need, just like all other housing in our city. This week, we have lots of cool stuff going on. Strikeout baseball, they're doing a fundraiser and going over to the Lugnuts game. The Lansing Police Department will be giving out awards to several of their members for bravery and other incredible acts. Let's not forget, this week is Love Lansing Week. It's 5-1-7 Day this, this Friday, and there are events Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So check out the, our website, and the, there are lots of different events going on. On Saturday also, between 8:00 AM and 12:00, and 8:00 AM and noon, over on Pennsylvania, they're going to be cleaning up the Meridian, that Meridian on Pennsylvania. I'm sure Councilman Garza knows it well. It's part of a day of service, so there'll be lots of folks on the north. It's, I think it's over by Mount Hope on Pennsylvania. I know you've been there before. And then finally, Lids for Kids is happening at Fire Station 8, I believe it's Saturday, so kids can go and get free bike helmets, and I think there's an auction for, for bicycles also. I know the Sinus Law Firm always sponsors that. And then we have two programs that are opening up. The Empower Program, run by the LEDC, is now open, so we ask BIPOC business owners who want to get some assistance to apply for the Empower Program on the LED's website, LEDC's website. And the Citizen Academy, applications are open, so people can apply for our Citizen Academy. So lots to do and lots going on. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have one show cause hearing regarding 1115 Regent Street.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. What we have is 1115 Regent Street. It looks like this was originally red-tagged, 8/4 of 2009. The SEV on this property is $47,400. Estimated cost to repairs is $97,149. This was brought to the demo board December 7th of 2023, and was makesay or demolished by 2/22 of 24 as unsafe. This is not a fire-damaged property. At this time, it looks like the only thing that was issued was a mechanical permit to one of 24. The rest of the permits are outstanding.
Okay, it looks like we may have a gentleman here from Regent Street.
Yes, we have Howard Casey, and you have three minutes to address council on your...
If I can just touch on one thing. I'm not knowledgeable of the process. My only interest today is if someone can steer me to anything that I can do to save this property. It's not a fire-damaged property. I don't know what's unsafe about it. It's a problem property that's been going on for years and years and years, and I'm sure everyone's sick and tired of dealing with it. Long-term explanation, the family suffered, I just acquired it from a family that I knew personally. They had five tragic deaths over the last 10 or 12 years. Put an effort into it, spent money to do it, didn't really follow the rules. I have no interest in debating any of that. If I can solve this and fix it, it's a home I can live in without a mortgage. I'm due to retire. I'd like to resolve it if there's any way that something can be worked out. There are currently at least three current permits on it. There's electrical that's been issued, there's heating and cooling that's been issued, and footing permits that are, been issued that are active in the process. We're subject to the monthly, I don't know what they do, it's a drive-by inspection, a monitoring, and we're subject to that. There's a $2,000 fee for tonight's appearance, administration fee, that's part of the process that I wasn't aware of. So I don't know if I'm pleading ignorance or not, but I'm definitely willing to do anything that is required, you know, to salvage this deal. It's a quality old house, it was a relatively prominent family, raised nine kids there, same ownership since the 60s, a divorce and remarriage, and, like I said, the five deaths. They actually came to me years ago, I'm a state and nationally certified home inspector, been doing business in Lansing for 18 years, and they actually came to me years ago and asked me if I could help them through the process of, they were pulling permits and stuff, and I was really too busy at the time. I thought they could resolve it themselves. So I kind of feel... So I don't know if anyone can answer my questions, or if this is a done deal.
Excuse me, sir. So tomorrow, this gets referred to the Public Safety Committee at 4:00 PM here behind these council chambers, and those are the type of discussions that will take place at that point in time.
And I can attend that?
Absolutely.
Am I done?
For today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, so now we are to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that's items three through five, and we have no one signed in to speak. So we can move forward to the referral of the show cause hearing?
That would be public safety tomorrow at 4:00 PM.
Okay. We are to the, we already adopted the item on the consent agenda, so we're to resolutions for action, item four, Peter Mormon to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. And I do believe we have Mr. Mormon with us, so this is an appointment for Peter Mormon as a member of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors. We actually had Mr. Mormon in before development and planning, and I believe it was May 8th. It was an excellent interview. We also had Mr. Alex Watkins, we appreciate you being here tonight as well, from the LEDC. He's also the staff member for the Four Corridor Improvement Authorities. In any event, we learned that Mr. Mormon has lived in the city of Lansing since 2001. He currently lives in the Fourth Ward, so he lives just south of Saginaw Street in the west side neighborhood. Very interested in the revitalization of the Saginaw Street Corridor in terms of aesthetics and commercial viability. Was very, very in tune with the, I think, the issues that have long plagued Saginaw Street. I think articulated a very clear vision for Saginaw Street, and I think, you know, maybe most impressive was just, you know, the sincerity in wanting to, to help in any way he can to really move that corridor forward. He currently works for the Michigan Department of Treasury. Prior to his current position, he did spend 21 years in the House of Reps as a Deputy Policy Director and Policy Advisor. He is not currently on any board, certainly qualifies to be on this board. He is not currently on any board, certainly qualifies to be on this board. But we also want to recognize that he has in the past served in some capacity. He was actually, as an example, on the Traffic Board before it merged and became the Public Service Board. The, and we always like to see this, this Corridor Improvement Authority was, in fact, his first choice when applying. And it was a relatively recent application that was actually put forth March 3rd. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, comments from counsel? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors, member.
Of the Office of Saginaw Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors, member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, just keep things rolling. We have a tribute recognizing June as LGBTQI-plus Pride Month in the City of Lansing. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I actually have a substitute for this. We missed a grammatical error in the first draft. Do I need to move the substitute first?
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for a substitute. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Now, are you gonna...
Yep. So this is a resolution by City Council. I'm just going to read a couple of things that are on here. Whereas the City of Lansing City Council affirms the rights of all humans to live as their authentic selves, void of the threat of death, many face daily. And the City of Lansing, the City of Lansing City Council stands in solidarity with the LGBTQI-plus community. Also, whereas hate has, hate and violence are on the rise globally, and people of the LGBTQI-plus community have been murdered for who they are locally and worldwide, continuing into this decade, no individual in the United States should have to live in fear of being the target of violence because of who they are or who they love. Hate shall find no safe harbor in the City of Lansing. And then whereas the City of Lansing desires to fly the pride flag during the month of June on the Lansing City Hall flagpole and show our neighbors we have their back, now therefore be resolved that the City of Lansing City Council recognizes pride and commends the bravery, solidarity, and resiliency of the LGBTQI-plus community in the face of violence and discrimination and stands with you in this continuous fight for equality, diversity, and inclusion. And then it just repeats it, finally be resolved that we want to see the pride flag fly on the flagpole. For folks that aren't aware, what sparked the June month for being Pride Month was the Stonewall riots back in 1967. Stonewall was a gay bar in New York that the police raided, which started several days of riots within that neighborhood and that city. And this is how we commemorate it every year, remembering that in a world that's ever-changing, we see human rights starting to shrink in some places, and we want to make sure that it doesn't happen here. So with that, I would move the substitute resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns? Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the effort of putting this together. While I support LGBTQ rights, I also believe in being inclusive with everyone. And so we're looking at affirms the rights of all humans to live as authentic selves, void of threat of death, many face daily, and so on and so forth. We also have groups such as African-Americans, who Juneteenth is in the month, and have not been able to fly their flags. Additionally, we have February is Black History Month, Women's Month in March, and Jewish Month in May, and so on and so forth. So I think if we're going to set a new precedent, we should, as a body, look at maybe overall all of the different protected classes and people who have died because of who they are and who they love. Myself being half Asian-American and African-American, several threats on my family. My mother and father were born in 1945, as well as what a lot of different groups, the Hispanic community, has done through America as well. So I think that while I support this, flying the flags, we should have a new precedent in saying, hey, how do we look at this overall if what we're trying to do is talk about everyone being included and everyone being supported 100% in the City of Lansing? And so for that reason, I would look at amending this somehow for my support.
So are you asking for a motion to amend? Or do you want to do a separate resolution?
I don't know.
Councilman Cost.
President Garza, I would say that I agree with everything that you said there, and I understand the spirit of what you're saying. I would say that this is specific to this group in this month that has been Pride Month for over 50 years. So, you know, if we wanted to do something separately, that could be a different discussion. But I think that this is focused, just like we did last year, pass a resolution specific to Pride, and then we passed a resolution specific to June 18th.
Well, for example, for me, if we look at all of the groups in Lansing for Juneteenth, then that would be, are we going to fly both flags for the month of June? So that's what I'm saying when it relates to this.
I can't speak on, this is a totally separate issue. So, you know, Juneteenth is not in this resolution. That, again, last year, that was a separate resolution, because I think that they're separate things.
Well, absolutely.
And we need to make sure that we honor them properly.
Absolutely. They've tried to fly their flag in the city before on the flagpole in June, and it's been denied. So that's why this has come to me, so I'm bringing this forward from the constituent group.
Okay, I seen Councilman Jackson, his hand up as well.
Thank you. I just think it's a really cool idea to fly all the flags. I was thinking also that our committee, DEI Committee, we could take that up as a topic and have a robust conversation and get all the potential, you know, months and everything. But I would still support the motion as it is today.
Are you okay with that, Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I like that. That's what...
Okay, all right. So we have a motion to adopt. Councilman Cost's resolution. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That if you have not signed in, please, and wish to address counsel tonight, please jump up and get with Tyron in the next minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. I move that all items be considered as written full, and appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, thank you. We have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
We have from the clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And polling place relocations.
Committee of the whole.
From the mayor, we have the appointment of Eric Tans to the Capillary Transportation Authority.
Committee of the whole.
The appointment of Jenna McShane to the Lansing Public Media Authority Board.
City operations.
The appointment of Lilian Werbin to the Lansing Public Media Authority Board.
City operations.
Neighborhood enterprise zone certificates for the Prudenwill Lofts condominiums.
Development and planning.
Grant acceptance, the Department of Eagle, for the Volunteer Stream Cleanup Program.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
We have grant acceptance for Federal Highway Administration Electric Vehicle Charging.
Ways and Means, internal auditor.
And we have two sole-source purchases for the Parks and Recreation Department. One is for straight-line fence, for fence work at Strikeout Baseball Stadium, and the other is for masonry at the same stadium.
And those will also go to Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And communications and petitions. We have notice from the Liquor Control Commission, Go Green Sunoco Transfer of Ownership, and that's at 3,000 Dunkel Road.
City operations.
And a claim appeal for 917 Chidok Street for trash fees. I'm sorry, 917 Chidok Street is the name of the owner, and the trash fees are at 926 Everett Drive.
City operations.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks by council members? I guess I just would like to say, I much appreciate Nicholas Zandi for reviving the old Everett Neighborhood Association. Please let me know how I can be helpful. Thank you. Any additional remarks? All right, seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor?
Mayor Shore?
Just one comment. I know next week is budget week for you all. I'd certainly love to hear if there are going to be any amendments. I'm always happy to work with folks here. We have for six years, and if we can work with anybody here on amendments, I am open to it at any time, so please feel free to give me a call anytime this week. And just good to get a heads up. I know you have a deadline on Thursday of noon, so love to see them before the weekend as well so we can evaluate the impact on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government matters. We have Loretta Stanaway followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Well, I've been informed that the relocation of City Hall is a basically done deal and that City Council is powerless to do anything about making changes there, but I still feel the need to raise some points. I think there are some good aspects to the suggested lot on the corner there. Good are that we do own that property, and there is better parking there, and it would be built to our needs, so those are positives. But as in anything, the devil is always in the details, and there are also, in my view, some pretty serious negatives. First off, we don't have any blueprints. There's been no new RFP, in spite of the fact that this will be an entirely new project on a new location, which to me says there should be a new RFP, because this way, we have no idea, we have no cost estimates. We don't know, without a new RFP, whether or not it could be built cheaper by someone else or in another place. There are some pretty serious optics associated with that location. It is triangulated by the park population on the riverfront that is homeless, by Jim Ho and Justice and Mental Health, by a large and vacant former State Journal building. It's directly opposite the Catta Bus Station, which is populated with transients and vagrants. And I hear that Catta's looking at possibly merging their new headquarters with our new City Hall and talking about adding in a daycare and a warming shelter, which I fail to see as how they are any part of the mission of Catta. The City Rescue Mission is going to be building down the block. Rutter Park is around the corner with its homeless issues. A burned-out party store around the corner will most likely be getting rebuilt. That was a hangout, again, for the homeless and alcoholics and drug addicts. I'm concerned for the public when they have to come to events or meetings at the new City Hall after daylight hours when they're surrounded by these populations. It does not seem to me to be a very safe prospect. And it's not really, quote, downtown, unquote. I still prefer seeing us add on to or make it adjacent to the new Public Safety Campus, which would give us economies of scale, a truly one-stop shop for the City Hall, as the mayor has said is his goal. We do own the property. There is enough sufficient parking. And lastly, it really is not our job to provide a quid pro quo to Mr. Boji. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Willie Hobbs.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Jeremy Garza for recognizing me and my new Neighborhood Association. I know that starting a Neighborhood Association is a big responsibility for me and for the people who get elected to the Neighborhood Board. I want to speak on that as well as the whole, I've said this before, I'll say it again, the Neighborhoods Department absolutely, definitely needs to have several funding priorities towards them because the second ward just lacks a lot with the Neighborhood Associations, and if they want to bring some of those back, like some other Neighborhood Associations that don't have active ones, they should feel free to be able to get the Neighborhood Grants to regularly schedule meetings so that they can be accommodated by the department, which is why they should be responding as well. And also, I want to speak about the new City Hall. I've said this before, I've said this again. I don't really think City Hall should really be in downtown Lansing. It's, like, I would say that's, like, too crowded, and it's just not a great space for parking. Now, the new location, which is on an old parking lot, I get that, the appeal. I mean, it's got the largest parking lot of all of them, but it's still not necessarily the best. It's better than that old masonry building, which is just like Freemason building, which is, like, why choose that building of all things? And saying that, I think maybe if I were to choose it, I would go with where SWAC used to be, because it's right out of the state of Lansing and would bring more traffic to the south side of Lansing. It's, and would also, so make it easier for people to get there and park since it also has a large parking space. And this, and plus, since they're building a new police station there where the old SWAC used to be, I really do think that maybe that might be the best place to put it, as now you would actually be able to kill two birds with one stone, as I like to call it. I don't know if I should really say that on television, but you know what I'm saying. And that is, but using this whole new location, again, it's like, we don't know the cost of that. We don't know how expensive that is and how much it's going to cost, how much it's going to really bankrupt the city if it actually is chosen. Because building a new, I'm not an economic expert or a development expert, but why no? Building a new building from City Hall from scratch, that ain't cheap. And you got to consider, like, the quality of the materials using because there's a chance that some of those buildings could collapse as soon as it's constructed. So that's a whole other problem. So, yeah, that's why I'm not entirely satisfied with the new location, and I think that the City Council should at least have some more input in this.
Thank you. Finally, we have Willie Hobbs.
How y'all doing this evening? See, that's why I just say what I say. See what that lady just said a few minutes ago? She said, "See, the people hanging out like homeless folk." See, I don't want to become to be no homeless folk. I've been working hard all my life to have something. Working my fingers to the bone, being honest about it, working, not taking, not stealing. So therefore, we got to get the ball rolling, what going on with my situation. Ain't nobody, I ain't forgot. I've been burying some family members in St. Louis, Mississippi. That's why I ain't been coming down here. Now I'm going to go down to Cold Compliment tomorrow. I'm going to find out that guy's name. I'm going to take, I'm going to get some pictures of my property that when they break out there and when they left, so I can let y'all see what going on and what they did to me. Because I'm not going to stop until I'm dead, because I need a place to stay. I don't want to be homeless, and I don't want nobody to take my property. See, I paid for that, and I'm still paying tax on it. Now, what they did was unjust, and I'm trying to prove it the best way I can that it was unjust. Now, I'm asking, and I'm begging for help. Now, you can't say I didn't. Now, y'all have a good night. Now, y'all have a good night.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
All right, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.